This regular meeting of the Navasota City Council is called to order on Monday, the 27th of March. The council chambers let the record show all council members are present. Welcome and thank you all for being here tonight. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode. And to visitors, please sign in. If you wish to speak under visitor's remarks, fill out the form found in back. State your name and address at the podium as we must document meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mac Vaughn, then followed by the pledges.
Oh gracious God, this Lenten season, let us be ever mindful of the sacrifices that were made for each one of us, that we might be able to enjoy the blessings that you give us freely. God, we just give you thanks for our first responders, for our law enforcement, and for our city council, God, that you brought those skillsets together to further the life of this city. We thank you for that. God, we just ask this evening that you let your Spirit reign and wash over each and every one of us, that our conversations might be joyful, hopeful, and constructive and grace-filled in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Have two. First, John Nix from Plantersville.
Howdy, Mayor. My name is John, and I'm mayor of the city councils. My name is John Nix. Same thing I like to have is about last time, I'd like to see more police presence when you're doing your budget to budget mark for having more police officers in the city to address the concerns on Highway 6, especially in that concern, especially north of the city, to where the speed limit drops down to 60, including a person in the Brazos County side of the city. It's like I'm the only one that drives 60, people speeding by like it's not even funny. It's very, very crazy and very, very dangerous. We'd like to see some more of police presence and also I'd like to see some more of saying no to tech dot in their plans for the city, like if they want to expand one or five, just tell them no. Other cities have changed tech dots plans, like in the Woodlands and Shenandoah, and I think it's time to have a city that does the same, like all the mess that they have done, running into other cities like College Station, and how the mess that they've done on Highway 6 and then 1774 and other areas as well. So in other areas as well. So I think there's something on that issue, and I know I missed speaking up on the parks, but I'd like to also register opinion that I'd like to see more of an accessibility for all, like a fund for all for more, out of an accessibility for people like myself and my chairs. So those would be kind of my three issues as well to discuss, you know, with more police and, you know, saying no to tech dot and all that, so more of my opinion on parks. And that would be kind of all, and I want to thank so much and have a great day and get going.
Deborah Richardson.
Deborah Richardson, 1202 Lane Street in Navasota. I was at the Parks meeting that y'all just had, and one thing I would say, I like the idea of some of the signs, but the main, my main concern with the signs is that Navasota doesn't always do such a great job of maintaining the signs they have. Some of the street signs have faded and need to be replaced. Over there by Ketchum Park, I guess, by the Navasota Center, there's an orange sign that's meant to indicate a bicycle way and a walkway that's so faded, you know? So I would just urge that when you're in the process of making these new signs, you also budget in their maintenance and what it would take. Thank you.
Item number four, the staff report, Mr. Weeks.
Mayor, at this time, I'm gonna ask Peggy Johnson to come up in introduction of our new employees.
Good evening, Peggy.
Peggy Johnson, Human Resource Director to Mel Miller and the council. I would like to introduce you to our new, two newest city employees. First, we have our new park and recreation manager, which is Ryan Hendricks. He was hired on with the City of Navasota, March the 13th, in our Parks and Recreation Department. He will be overseeing our city pools and the Navasota Center and all the parks in the city of Navasota with events and activities, plenty of activities. In 2013, he attended, he obtained, let me put this paper up, he obtained his Bachelor's of Science in Ken, Kenzo Knowledges from the University of Texas at San Antonio. Most recently, in 2022, he earned his Masters in Science, Masters of Science in Sports Administration from Arkansas State University with a 4.0 GPA. His main goal as the new park and recreation manager is to utilize his expertise and skills in recreation sports to bring more opportunities, more opportunities to the city of Navasota to be active with one another. So if you would, help me welcome Ryan. Employee is Michael Moya. He was hired on also with the City of Navasota on March the 13th. He is our new meter service technician in our Financial Services Department. Michael is originally from Somersville, Texas. He's been living in Navasota for the last three years, but have been working here for over 20 years. He's married with two children and recently became a grandfather. He enjoys spending time with his family, working in his yard, and watching the Dallas Cowboys, the old Cowboys, and we'd like to welcome him to the city of Navasota.
Welcome and thank you, Peggy. Next, I'm gonna have Jennifer Reina to come up and give us an update on all of our CIP projects that we've got going on in the city.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jennifer Reina, Director of Public Works. My first update is gonna be for the annual street maintenance project. This is the annual maintenance project, not the CIP. The bid opening will be April 17th at 2:00 p.m., and then we'll come back to award that bid on April 24th. Next is the sidewalk project on Washington from 8th Street to 10th Street. Staff did a final walkthrough last Friday with the engineer and the contractor. We do have a punch list with some items remaining on there. They are saying that there's a possibility of those completion of the punch list that's remaining on this project to take up to two weeks, with the exception of the light poles that's on back orders until about November. That's on the sidewalk project. And then the AWAS project is up and running, it's in test mode, and then once the FAA then comes in and commission it. I am working with SRSINet to install a NATOM system. This is actually to communicate with the weather service, so that takes a couple of months, but it is up and going, and the pilots can radio, radio up the weather from the AWAS as we speak right now. Other than that, items five and six will be the other CIP items. Any questions?
So what's, how did they, how did the pilots get updated now that, now we have this?
I think it's by the rate, by their radios. Is that correct?
I mean, but do we?
Um, Matt, when they radio up, they can get the radios and then they get online when they do their...
That's what I understand, yes.
That's how they get the AWAS information.
So it's something that they'll already know that they're supposed to do?
Yes.
I mean, like, we've gone this many years without having one?
So when they do their flight planning, they can now see the weather, when they do their flight planning?
Okay. Where they didn't before?
Where they didn't before.
Okay, so maybe that's...
So they would, they would get the weather information from Brenton, since they were the closest city when they did the flight planning. Now they get it directly from our AWAS. It's just without the system that I'm gonna be going into an agreement with SRSINet with the NATOM system, that is actually like an Internet's provider that will give information to the weather system. So that's our next step, but it is up and running.
They have noticed airmen or something that come out periodically, don't they? They would list us things like this?
Yeah, so that's something that we would put out if something, NATOM is something that, if we have maintenance to our runway, when we do our street sweeping to the runway, there's an accident, so on and so forth. That's something that myself or our FBO would place, and then that would give pilots information about the closures with the airport. So those is two different things.
I guess what I was getting down to is could we do a press release that says this is...
So that was my next question. Is council's preference to do a ribbon cutting out there to completion of this project and then within that, doing a photo and then doing a press release afterwards? Is that a...
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I would love to see that in the paper so that more people understand what that means and...
If you would like to have that, the actual site of where the AWAS equipment is, we can have that open.
That would be cool.
We'll be sure to get with people at the airport, Airport Board and those type to actually be a part of it too and try to schedule it all together.
When it comes online, yeah.
And it is online and it is working. It's in test mode and the pilots are able to access it.
Has anybody used it yet?
Um, I don't know. I don't...
I don't, you don't have an airplane.
I guess Michael might know.
Do what?
I guess Michael might know.
Uh, he would know, I mean, go ahead, Matt.
I was just gonna, spread the word. I mean, once the thing is off, you'll be amazed at how the word is gonna get out.
Well, I know that Michael has used it, so I know, I mean, he has, he has used it, our FBO has used it. So if that tells me if he's using it, then other pilots are using it. So, that's good. And that, that is completed now. Any other questions? Thank you.
Chair, I think you've got the next item on proclamation.
Yes, we have a proclamation on Child Abuse Prevention Month. It's gonna be presented by Patty Sexton, Chair of the Grimes County Child Welfare Board. Hello.
My name is Patty Sexton, and I represent this evening the Child, the Grimes County Child Welfare Board. And I'm here to request that the Honorable Mayor and the city council members please consider approval of a proclamation that will declare April as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Navasota.
And here you have it. Here you have the official signed document.
Okay. And I'm gonna let you read the last part because it says your name. Okay. Whereas this is a consensus across the country that it's necessary to build strong prevention systems as part of a robust family well-being system that not only supports families when they're in crisis, but is intentional in supporting families before they're in crisis. The universal challenges faced over the past three years have compounded the struggles children and families in our communities were already facing and heighten the urgency for us to consider what a robust family well-being system in the city of Navasota, County of Grimes, could and should look like. Whereas in the city of Navasota, Texas, County of Grimes, we believe that children thrive in safe, stable nurturing families within their own communities. Through establishing partnerships with families that capitalize on the collective strength of parents and their children, we can build strong, healthy families in resilient communities where children can thrive. Sadly, child maltreatment is a significant public issue. Communities that lack accessible supports and resources are disproportionately affected by poverty and can experience increased risk factors that lead to child abuse and neglect. Despite the complex factors that can lead to maltreatment, it can be prevented. Whereas each year, the month of April is dedicated to recognizing the critical work being done by our great state to meet families upstream before a crisis occurs and offer them accessible lifelines that mitigate the challenges they face. Child abuse prevention occurs every day through the diligent, child abuse prevention occurs every day through the diligent work and tireless advocacy undertaking by the city of Navasota, Texas, and County of Grimes, families, friends, neighbors, houses of faith, advocacy groups, nonprofit organizations, schools, healthcare providers, social workers, and government agencies to support children and families in every community. Whereas child abuse prevention cannot be tasked to one community or an agency or a system, behind many families that succeed on their own is a strong community that provided a way for the family to meet their needs. We must all work together to strengthen our communities and build localized supports that are accessible and contribute to the well-being of the entire community and keep children and families safe and together. I encourage everyone to learn more about the many aspects of our communities working hard to create positive, healthy environments for the future leaders of our great state and nation, and together we can create a brighter future for children, families, community leaders in the Navasota, Texas, County of Grimes, and ensure tomorrow leaders have the support they need to thrive and gain their potential.
Therefore, I, Burt Miller, Mayor of the City of Navasota, do hereby proclaim April 2023 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Navasota, Texas, County of Grimes, and urge the appropriate recognition whereof. Signed this 27th day of March 2023.
Thank you. I have one more thing. I'll make it fast. The Child Welfare Board along with Scotty's House and Brian wishes to invite not only the council, but members of our own community in Navasota to a program on April 5th at 11:30 at the Justice Center in Anderson, to observe and support efforts to recognize at risk and respond with kindness and support. So I hope you all can make it. And Mayor, can we put our pinwheels up again and our signs? That be okay? Thank you very much. Bye.
Patty, what is the time the program's gonna be?
Well, I'm sorry?
The time.
11:30.
11:30.
Please be there.
Patty, if there are people in the community that wanna help, where do they, where do they go?
I'm sorry?
When people in the community want to help, where do they go?
Where, where do they go when they want to help?
Like, say they wanna donate items for families that may need them so that they can keep their children. Sometimes I know that families don't have beds and they need things done like that.
Yes, there's organizations that are in College Station. Right now, we've opened our Rainbow Room. I'm sure everybody knows about the Rainbow Room. Our problem is storage.
Yeah.
And what we're looking for right now is if anybody has a storage unit that we could have free, gratis, that'd be great, because we have a lot of people that wanna donate, but we don't have anywhere to put it right now. There are some organizations that are in Brian College Station that do take, and CPS would be the best people to probably get in touch with and find out if they have specific needs. Okay? Okay? Okay.
Cancel. Oh, you want to see it in there?
Chris, come on. Yeah. Makes me look good. Appreciate that. No, I can't.
Is that good?
I mean, okay. Okay.
She got him to know.
Uh, says Texas.
Oh. Glasses. Hello?
Oh.
Details, details.
All right, under, let's see, any council members got any border commission reports? I've got one from Planning and Zoning. There was approval of a preliminary site plan that was revised for a convenience store at the Pecan Lakes, or right at Pecan Lakes at 105, and has no truck stop features, so...
Back to the original, but they...
Coming up tomorrow, starting at 9:00, Special Olympics is gonna be at Rattler Stadium. We'll have, I think, six different school districts visiting, and so if you're available and are able to come out tomorrow, we need a lot of people, we need fans in the stands. So if you're available, come on out and cheer on these athletes that are gonna be here. Friday and Saturday is the Noon Lines Plant Sale at the Horlock House, 9:00 to 6:00 on both of those days. Saturday is the Pink and Blue Spring Fashion Show, Children's Fashion Show at the P.A. Smith Hotel from 11:00 to 1:00. There is an open house at the Grime, at the new Grimes County Animal Shelter, or Animal Rescue, that's on Sunday at noon, and then a ribbon cutting at 1:00. Wednesday, the 5th of April, is Coffee with the Chamber, and it'll be at Martha's Bloomers this time. April 8th, Saturday, the before Easter, is the Groovy Grapes Wine Walk from 2:00 to 6:00 downtown. Chamber website, you can get tickets early. I think you save about $5 if you go to the website and buy it early. The 15th, coming up down the road a little bit, Saturday, the 15th, is the Trash Off, which kicks off at 8:00 at the Navasota Center. Got something on the 22nd, but I can't read it. Anyway, the Navasota ISD Boys and Girls Soccer Teams, for the first time in school history, both are going, both won their first playoff, and they're going into the second round, and that's, that's huge, big deal for Navasota's soccer program. And this past Saturday, the newly formed Navasota Elks Lodge, number 2888, was officially sworn in in the community, and so they'll be starting to meet and they'll have, there's opportunities within that organization for support with, for the community and for activities within Navasota. So it's real exciting to see a new, a new community service group come together. Oh, that, the other thing that I couldn't read was April 22nd's coming up, there's the Railroad Street Art Fair at 10:00 that's gonna be over on Railroad Street.
Mayor, you got anything else?
Uh, no.
So also want to remind everybody that City Hall and all of our non-public safety operations will be closed in observance for Good Friday on April 7th. However, there will be some of us staff that actually have to work that day. Where the city has worked with Living and Triumph, the Lit organization, we're gonna be hosting the Easter Egg Hunt out at August Horse that day from noon to 2:00 p.m. So it'll be there at the August Horse, over there about where the pavilion is. So feel free to come out there. We'll have all the eggs stuffed and it'll be a great event. Hopefully this year it won't have any rain, but come join us for that event. And then also, I want to let everybody know that we plan on having a town hall meeting on April 4th, so April 4th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. here in city council chambers. We ask that you, the community, to come and let your voices be heard. This is in relation to our annual strategic planning workshop that we'll be having. So we ask the community to come in, we'll have a consultant that will be here and just get some feedback. So the consultant will be facilitating that, that meeting from 6:00 to 8:00. And I'll ask community, you know, what do you want out of your city over the next two to three years? And so we really want to be pushing this out. So today, Bobby pushed out something versus social media. We've got a press release that's been sent out, as well as we got some time that we're going to be meeting with Willie and Kenny over there, and Willie, he said, they actually get something out on, on the radio, and then also the examiner's gonna be pushing this out as well. Try to get as, as much feedback as we can from the community. And then staff will be reaching out to stakeholder groups for meetings specifically the next day. And so we'll be inviting specific members of the community, and it's gonna be centered around like education, will be a session, we'll have downtown, so everybody that has a business downtown will be invited. We'll also have sections for public safety, which will include police, fire, EMS, healthcare physicians, as well as the hospital. We also have a session where we will actually be inviting all of our boards and commissions so they could actually get some feedback, so that's all the boards and commissions will be, have a session. And then, of course, we'll have a session with our businesses and industry. So these will be specific businesses we've identified in town, whether it's restaurant or just a specific business, as well as some of our industrial partners. And those will be 45-minute sessions the following day, which will be led by, facilitated by our consultant. We'll be gathering all that information and then later on in the month, she'll be coming and meeting with staff, and then the following day, meeting with staff and council so we can come up with a plan, taking all that information, put it together, and coming up with a two- to three-year goals and ways that we can implement those goals.
Jason, also on the 4th is for Citizens University Group.
Correct, yes. So Citizens University is gonna be part of that discussion also at the community, so we'll be kicking that off at 5:00. It's one of the ones, first, only meetings that will actually start at 5:00. So we'll, from 5:00 to 6:00, we'll be having Citizens University, and then they'll participate in the town hall meeting as well. Mayor, that's all I've got.
Okay. Item number five is to consider, consideration of possible action on to award the contract for the Fire Hydrant Replacement Capital Improvement Project. Ooh, I'll butcher this one. Kishnik?
Yes.
Did I get it?
Kishnik.
Kishnik, General Contractors, and the amount of $440,250.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Once again, Jennifer Reina with the Public Works Director. On March the 16th, the city had a bid opening for the Fire Hydrant Replacement Project. A total of eight bids were received, a good amount of bids, that's good news for us. Kishnik, General Contractors, came in as the lowest bidders. The base bid for the 24 fire hydrants that are gonna be replaced came in at $317,250. So we were able to add on 10 more additional hydrants to be, to be replaced, and that came in at $123,000 with the total bid, with the base bid and the add-on bid in the amount of $440,000. in the amount of $440,250. And then we budgeted a total of $480 for this project. So on top of the 24, we're actually, are gonna be able to do 10 more of those hydrants being replaced in town. And that lowest bid came to Kishnik General Contractors. Do you have any questions? I actually have, um, Tim and Zach here with Blile. Um, and then we, actually, this is a good project. Um, this is gonna be 60 days, maybe 75 days with the 10 additional, um, project. So, um, then we do not anticipate any water outages, because we're gonna be inserting, um, inserta valves when we do the, um, replacement or the, uh, addition to, or adding the hydrant. So that's not, we're, we're not gonna lose any water, um, with this project. So that was, uh, included into the bid with the inserta valves. Any questions on this project? You're thinking. I see you.
Is this going to affect our, uh, insurance rating?
Well, this is more of a replacement for old hydrants, some of them that have been placed out of service, so currently it, it's maintaining what we've been graded on already.
And some of these, um, are missing, actually missing from our system. Either been hit by a vehicle and not put back in, or, um, just for some reason, they're missing, um, and then, so they're gonna be added back into the system.
It'll improve your coverage area overall, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, because there again, it's, it's putting hydrants back where they were supposed to be, so. And just over the last few years, we've lost, as she said, some cars have hit some, some are just old. Believe it or not, we have some hydrants that are still in circulation, and this will take them out that were put in the, in the 30s and 40s.
Early 1900s. And more, and more fire hydrants will be replaced in the big utility, um, street CIP project as well.
They put the old hydrants on eBay or something, and they get some, get some money for them.
I'm in search of one that's, uh, pre-1900 that I want to use, uh, for display.
That would be cool.
Sell them to dog parks.
Yeah.
I guess my only question is, I mean, I, I'm, I'm happy with their bid, I mean, some of these bids are wildly higher.
Yes.
I mean, I saw that, that one for 1.3.
The fine print on the next page, but...
Pretty fine.
It's, it's way finer than what I can see.
Yeah, so you couldn't read it, but you, if you did electronically, you could pull it up, so yeah, that's my fault, but it, it was a huge spreadsheet.
It's a big spreadsheet, I get that. I mean, but that's, I mean, that's quite a drastic difference.
They may not need the work, maybe, as much.
I don't, I think they were waiting to bid on the bigger CIP project.
That's, that's, that's usually the case. Uh, there's also a lot of other big projects coming out this year, various cities. Um, a lot of times you can just tell how hungry contractors are, and how much they just want to keep their name out there.
Okay.
Because there's, there are some contractors that bid on everything and are consistently high, because they have the workload, but, um...
But they don't want their name to not be on the list.
Exactly.
Oh, I got you. I got you. I thought some of these bids, I was like...
Yeah, they don't want you thinking you're not interested, you know, because the next time, they might really want it, so.
Mr. Mayor, I move to award the contract for Fire Hydrant Replacement Capital Improvement Project to Kishnik General Contractors in the amount of $440,250.
Check. Motion by Mr. Folks, second by Ms. Peterson to approve, or to award contract for Fire Hydrant Replacement Capital Improvement Project to Kishnik General Contractors in the amount of $440,250. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item six, consideration of possible action to enter into an agreement with Strand Associates to provide engineering services for the natural gas main system loop and extension capital improvement project for the City of Navasota in the amount of $210,000.
So, um, again, this is the approval to enter an agreement with Strand Associates, uh, to design a new high-pressure gas main from the industrial park to the new, uh, a new regulator station, new regulator station closest, closer to Pecan Lakes Estates, and, and loop part of that system, uh, in, into that main. Uh, the, the new gas main and, uh, gas regulator station will help provide adequate amount of pressure and volume to Pecan Lakes and for the upcoming development in, in that area. So I'm requesting to have approval to go into the agreement with Strand Associates. I have Mark with Strand Associates here, if you have any questions with Mark. Um, they have done work for the City of Navasota.
We worked with them before, too.
They've done the gas modeling for us, and, um, they have a lot of experience with natural, natural gas.
And this would start up pretty quick, too, right?
Um, how long will it take for the design phase, Mark? Could you come up here and...
So yeah, the design phase on this, we're probably looking at, in the neighborhood of three to four months, and we actually are ready to have our kickoff meeting, assuming that this gets approved on Wednesday. So we're ready to get out there and get it surveyed to, to get going. Uh, the overall construction time, we're looking at about one year for the full project. But we're going to install one portion to kind of go ahead and loop in that part of the system to give you some immediate relief, uh, before you get to the winter time and peak.
So this project will be in two phases. Um, with Pecan Lakes relief, uh, doing the internal loop, and then the second phase.
That'll keep our numbers all within...
Which will get the, for the future development. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the City of Navasota entering into an agreement with Strand Associates, Incorporated Provide Engineering Services for the Natural Gas Main System Loop and Extension Capital Improvement Project for the City in the amount of $210,000.
Second. Motion by Mr. Folks, second by Mr. Gessner to approve the agreement with Strand Associates in the amount of $210,000. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that, that the, uh, items under Agenda Item Number Seven, which are consent agenda items, be separated, so that we get a little better explanation on, uh, both of the items.
Item Number 7A, approve interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and the City of Navasota for the Choice Partners Cooperative.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Reina Tashera, Economic Development Director. Um, as we had gone over a little bit in the, um, wayfinding workshop, um, the interlocal agreement between the Harris County Department of Education and the City of Navasota is for the Choice Partners Cooperative, um, and so National Signs LLC, which is the wayfinding company that, um, we've been working with, has a contract through the Choice Partners Cooperative, which enables them to enter directly into the bidding process for government work, um, because Choice Partners National Purchasing Cooperative offers procurement and contract solutions to meet government purchasing requirements. So entering into this interlocal agreement will enable the City of Navasota to expedite that procurement process and move more quickly on the, um, on the procurement and fabrication and installation of the wayfinding signs.
So, so basically, this is like, it's, it's like HGAC.
Yeah.
Where, so they've already done all the bidding for you, uh, so the only thing we have to come to you for is, um, approval for the purchase, because it's, it exceeds $50,000. So we don't have to go through the entire bidding process. The bidding process has already occurred, and so by joining this cooperative group, we don't have to go through that process.
We're, we're involved in a couple other cooperative groups the same way, aren't we?
Correct. Well, we're, we're, uh, part of the BV COG group, we're also part of, uh, HG, no, uh, uh, Bi... Byboard, we're partially by board. So that's what this item is.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and the City of Navasota for the Choice Partners Cooperative.
Motion by Ms. Peterson, second by Mr. Gessner to approve the interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and the City of Navasota for the Choice Partners Cooperative. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item 7B, approve a letter of support for T-Mobile Hometown Grant Application.
Mayor and City Council, um, the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Application. Um, this grant is for eligible cities, um, of less than $50,000 to receive up to, um, $50,000 in funds to invest, invest in their local communities. And there are gonna be 24 small towns and rural communities across Texas that will be selected for this round of funding. Um, and the deadline to apply for that is March 31st, 2023. So city staff has been working really closely with the Grimes County Little League Organization in identifying, um, some improvements that can be made to both, um, the Little League fields at August Horse Park, and then also at Manly Park. Um, so we've identified several projects and, um, received some just, uh, overall pricing on some of those, and we're working with the Grimes County Little League to identify which of those are our priority, and since there's no matching portion of the city, if we were to receive these funds, um, what they would be put, put towards. And so some of the projects we've looked at include, um, lighting improvements, shading over bleachers, improvements to bathrooms and concession stands, replacing old fences and adding paved parking, um, paved parking. So, um, and this is a highly competitive grant, so in order to hopefully increase our chances of receiving funding, we're asking for a letter of support from City Council, but we've also, um, requested and received letters of support from other organizations such as NISD, um, Navasota Police Department, because of the safety concerns that, um, could be addressed, and then Grimes County Little League as well.
In a, in a picture of, of us with our pockets pulled out.
Well, we're, we're also putting, within the narrative, um, a lot of the funding that's gone in on the, on the private side, nonprofit side, with Grimes County Little League and private investment that have gone into those, but then also maintenance that cities, um, the cities put into improvements at, at those parks as well. So just showing that we have been investing into these parks, but there are more improvements that need to, need to be addressed as well. And also, um, the Grimes County Little League, there are, um, there are grants that are offered through T-Mobile that help with registration costs for, um, parents and low-income families, and so they utilize those grants, so, or, and those, um, registration fee funds that are available. So we're putting that into the narrative as well of how thankful we are, our community is of their support, um, in helping our, our families.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the letter of support for the T-Mobile Hometown, Hometown Grant Application.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Ms. Peterson to approve the letter of support for T-Mobile Hometown Grant Application. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Mayor, I have that letter, if I don't mind passing it around, if they will each sign it. There's two copies, please.
Can I go?
Yes, one's for them and one's for...
Hey, where's your...